Time doesn't work so well for me.
I would make the suggestion county executive's office assume that role.
How often do short meet?
Every other month at 4:30.
How many you got Bill?
I got a full plate. I got chair of the wise corporate board and I'm incoming chair for Greater Salisbury. I mean, I've got my plates overloaded. I've got a couple but it's on tape.
She said they do provide dinner before the meeting.
It's very good.
I'm gonna pull up the minutes just so I know when they meet or see if I can pull up. I don't know if they even have.
Looks like the first Monday is that?
It's first Monday.
Yes, it's Monday. Mr. Strong said it was a Monday.
And how often do they meet? Once a month?
Every other month.
Every other month? You said that, yeah.
So what, six weeks?
Well, what we could probably do is split it up and have a different council person responsible to be there every other month. Of course, I'm concerned that when we come to that time, someone will say that I can't make it. Did you say you were gonna do it Josh?
I can, I like the idea of splitting up even more. I don't want to be overloaded. I really don't want to, especially this coming year.
It doesn't sound like anybody's been attending.
Well, Matt was appointed the last time and he never went.
He never went?
Yeah.
I do think it's a good idea to actually appoint a representative and then just have someone fill in if that person can't make it.
If you can't make it, make a phone call.
I'll take the bullet. I'll go.
Thank you Josh.
And I would say, because we haven't been very good at this, if you know that you can't make the particular meeting you're supposed to go to, you should contact Laura Hurley, let her contact them and let them know you're not gonna be there. So that she can, so that she can possibly...
I have filled in before, so.
So that she can look for another county representative to take your place.
Josh, I'll try to back you up on it. You know, if you can't go or something, let me know. I mean, I'll be a sort of backup.
That'd be good. I highly respect you're up and I'd love to actually continue supporting, but just trying to be around.
Right, I like the organization, so.
Yeah. Okay.
But try to let Laura know if you can't make these meetings, because a lot of these, you're right, a lot of these people, their attendance is minimal. So I would say if you know that you can't make this particular commission, let her know. So that an alternative could possibly range, be arranged.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Before we go to lunch and the, well, we do have, we do have time with the Board of Education. I want to get back to that mining thing, huh? But we'll have to go back into legislative session. We'll do that after the Board of Education work session, okay?
Do they get their permit?
You wanna do it right now? Is it made out quickly?
Do they get it?
I don't think they have anything yet, do they?
No, Chris McCabe sent me a text saying that the MDE sent the permit to be signed.
We know that.
All right, well, that's fine.
Well, this morning.
Let's do, we're gonna break for lunch and then when we come back, we're gonna meet with the Board of Education and we'll address that issue. We'll go back to legislative session. We're gonna take a half hour recess.
The deal is, Bill, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be signed. That's what the...
We are reconvening as the Wycomica County Council in a work session, December 18th, 2018. Last work session item that we have and the most important one is the Wycomica County Board of Education. So we're glad to have everyone here today. If you'd please come up, take a seat however you might like to choose. I see we do have, of course, President Fitzgerald. We also have Mr. Palmer and Ms. Sathowski, Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Fitzgerald. We also have Ann Sathowski, who is a new board member. Congratulations, as well as John Palmer, who is on your second term, John?
Yes.
Congratulations. Glad to have you here. How's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Good, fine.
Glad to be here.
Just so that, hmm?
Glad to be here.
Yes.
I'll let you do that.
Two different or same?
No, they're the same. I was just spreading.
Just for the record, so that the recording knows and the PAP 14 knows who you, who you people are. Just state that. Thanks.
Yes. Donna Fitzgerald, Wycomica County Board of Education.
Donna Hanlon, Superintendent of Schools.
And Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer.
Great. Okay, glad to have you.
Thank you.
We knew, we always know the Board of Education's gonna be prompt. In fact, you know that. It has to be. You're gonna be on time. So I'll leave it up to you to go first.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we just distributed to you an agenda that we had prepared in advance of getting a few items from you all yesterday. And we have that as well, so we will, we will be happy to converse about those items that you sent. But we wanted to do a few things this morning, one, or this afternoon, excuse me, we wanted to share some more detailed information with you about the SSAR ratings. I know you got information from me as early as I was able to provide it to you on the outcomes. We're pleased. Can always do better. In fact, already in the process of looking at where we need to improve. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Briggs, who's gonna take you through some information and happy to answer any questions that you have about how those stars are derived.
Good afternoon, guys. So I do want to share with you specifically in regards to the accountability plan and the SSAR ratings. Their PowerPoint will be off to the side and we'll be utilizing that to show you exactly how these star ratings were configured that Dr. Hanlon shared with you previously. First, if we want to point out that as, for accountability in Maryland, this is in reaction to federal law. So this is not something that just Wycomico's doing or not even something that just Maryland's doing. It's in response to the different reauthorizations of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act from 1965. So we're now over 50 years. You might remember No Child Left Behind in the early 2000s, which said that all students would be proficient and successful by 2014. Well, 2014 has come and went and not all students are proficient. So the Every Student Succeeds Act is the latest reauthorization and this is specifically Maryland's response to that. It is ambitious. It is rigorous. And unlike No Child Left Behind, it said everybody's gonna achieve proficiency by a certain date. This plan is to cut the number of students who are not proficient in half by 2030. Data from the 1617 school year is used as the baseline and all states had to use some sort of what I'm gonna call like a grading scale. Some states are actually assigning letter grades. Maryland chose to use a star rating framework as opposed to that. Specific data to show that cutting in half, I think a good example, if you're looking at, let's look at the second line, American Indian or Alaska Native in ELA. So right now, we were at 40%. So there's six, that means that there's 60% who are not meeting proficiency. So cut that in half, that would be 30, and then add that to the 40. That's where we come up with the 70% target proficient by 2030. And that's done for all students as well as the various subgroups, which includes students with disabilities and English language learners.
How many American Indian or Alaska Native?
Very few. I don't know the number, but it's very few. More than 10, or it would not be included in one of our subgroups. So 10 is the minimum number. To get the actual star ratings, it's basically taking the number of total points earned by a school. And I'm gonna share with you how schools earn points and divide that by the total possible points that their, a school is able to earn. And you come up with a percentage. One thing we need to get away from is that the usual percentage, like 75. When I think of 75%, I think that's a middle C. That's not the case here. Any school earning at least 75% of the points would earn five stars, which is the maximum. And then you see the various percentage frames in there as well. Now we'll talk a little bit about actually how schools can earn those points. So this is specifically for elementary and middle schools. I also have a slide for high schools. But for all schools, 65% of the possible points earned are from academic measures. So those first three columns that you see there, all specific regarding to academics. And then 35% is specifically rated for school quality and student success. Those non-academic measures. And what I'm gonna do is take a little bit of time to actually drill down into some of these for you. So for specific academic achievement, so 20% is the performance on ELA and math assessments. And so by going in there, you'll see that there's 10 points possible, five for math and five for ELA. For students who were proficient, which looking down at that bottom bar there, proficient means that they either met expectations, level four, or exceeded expectations, level five. And then the second 10 points is the average student performance for the entire school. And one thing I failed to mention at the beginning that I think is important to point out is that only schools get assigned star ratings. So Wycomico County Public Schools does not get a rating. It's specifically the schools that get the ratings, okay? So that was the academic achievement part. We'll next go into the academic progress. So that first bullet there is growth on park. So that's basically, this was, most school districts, including ours, were very excited that this was in there because this allows schools to basically be rewarded for moving students forward. So if you remember back to that chart that I just showed at the bottom, level one to level five, if a student comes in at a level one, through the excellent work of the teacher and the support staff, they bring them up to a level three, showing a lot of growth, that would still count as like a failure on the academic achievement part because they weren't proficient. But it would be captured in this growth piece. In addition to the growth, is also well-rounded curriculum. Not gonna get into a lot of detail, but it's there basically showing that students who are in fifth or eighth grade need to pass, first of all, need to have the opportunity to take and then pass specifically social studies, fine arts, physical education, and health. And then eighth grade, it also includes science as well. You'll see that there's the grade out part there, percent proficient on MISA and social studies assessments. Those are two state-level assessments that are currently being piloted. Once those go into effect, then they will become a part of the accountability system as well.
MISA is Maryland Integrated Science Assessment.
So we talked about academic achievement, academic progress. Next is English language proficiency. And this is for our English language learners and it captures the growth that they experience throughout the year. They take, all English language learners take access testing, which shows their proficiency learning the English language. And this growth measure captures that.
Is this a new item as opposed to how other testing's been done in the past?
No, we've all, so this is, the access testing always has been done and monitored, but this is obviously the first time it's been a part of the accountability system. So we've monitored it before and looking for, we've always obviously been trying to increase student growth in that area. It's just now gonna be reflected on the school's report card.
Is it reflected in a combination with all the other results or is it separated?
So I'll go back to that screen. So again, if you look up, so that, whoa, sorry, just skipped over. So that 10% is specifically for the EL population.
But on the website, you can click on that and you can dig, you can drill down and see how a school did in that area.
The specific achievements in that area.
Yes, yes.
And now we do have schools that do not have, so like, for example, at our high school level, all, the vast majority of EL students at high school, go to James M. Bennett where they can get the additional supports. So if you were to drill into like Wy High, Parkside, and Mardella, they would not have, because they don't have the minimum 10 that I referenced just a minute ago, because they do not have 10 EL students, they would not have, they would not get those 10 percentage of points. It doesn't help them, but it also doesn't hurt them. It would just change their denominator when they divide to get their percentage of points earned.
If you're online, you drill down into that section, will that refer you to Bennett?
Yes, I'll be able to show you that in just a second.
You'd be on Bennett's report card.
Oh, it would directly get to us?
Yep.
Correct.
Yep. And then the other 35% is school quality and student success. 15 points specific to absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined as the number of students absent 10% or more of the days that they're enrolled in school. If we say that students are in school all year, 180 days, so a student will be defined as chronically absent if they miss 18 or more days.
Excused or unexcused?
So family vacation hurts, college visits, death of a parent, anything. If you're absent from school, it counts towards that number. I will say this is definitely an area of growth for the vast majority of our schools in our district. This is where we lost a large number of points possible because we had so many students that are, by this definition, defined as chronically absent.
What about like field trips?
No, they're present.
They are present?
That counts, yep.
Because I've gotten phone calls. Well, if they mix the vacations in with the delinquents, then how the heck are they gonna know you're in a good position or bad position?
It's a good question.
The fall off would be is if you're not in school, you're not learning.
They just gotta be there.
Yep. And part of that, it's a good question, President Cannon. And that, and part of that is communication and our principals are doing a great job of it and I would love your support as well in communicating that to parents, that we want them in school. And while, you know, I understand with parents' work schedules and different things, there might not be opportunity for family vacations and certain things like that, but when they're out of school for a week, those are five days of instruction that they are missing and it's tough to be replicated. And then the last part is access to a well-rounded curriculum. It was mentioned in the previous slide. So that's the percentage of grade five and grade eight students enrolled in fine arts, physical education, and health. And we did a very good job in that area because all of our students are, have the opportunity and are experiencing a well-rounded curriculum. I did not. Thank you, Dr. Han. The climate survey, it's just on the right-hand side. That's currently grayed out. It was piloted this past fall and will be given in the spring and it will count towards next year's accountability. So this year, it did not count, but next year, that will go into effect and will hopefully help our schools, but that's to be determined.
It wasn't part of the denominator.
For high schools, it's set up the same way with the 65-35. I'm not gonna go into all of the drill downs. I'm just gonna highlight the ones that are different than the elementary and middle schools. Obviously graduation rate. So it's the percent of students that graduate within the four years. And then we also have an adjusted cohort graduation rate that allows for the fifth year with greater weight on the four years. Obviously four years is the goal. So that's worth 10 points. But five years is also acknowledged and counts. Academic progress, it is a little bit different, so I am gonna click on there. So for, this is the wrong one. Sorry, it's showing up. Sorry. Here we go. So for high school, well-rounded curriculum, it's the percent of students graduating or exiting with a certificate of completion with at least one measure of readiness for post-secondary success. And that's been talked about when we've been in here previously, when we're talking about CTE, AP, dual enrollment, or meeting the standard through some other measures such as SAT, ACT, or ASVAB. So not only do we just want to graduate students, we want to graduate them ready to join the workforce, whether it's through CTE or ready for college, as evidenced through AP or dual enrollment or some other measure. The other one which is interesting, which I think is a very valid measure to show how our students are doing, is that on track in ninth grade. So that's the percentage of students earning four or more credits in English, math, social studies, science, and/or world language. Again, lots of research. If we can get them in ninth grade and they can be successful in ninth grade, they're much more likely to graduate. So I like the fact that they put emphasis on that in ninth grade. And school quality and student success is basically, geez, sorry, it keeps kicking me back a slide. Here we go. So again, absenteeism is a factor. And I will say our secondary schools were hit harder than our elementary schools. Elementary students are much more likely to come to school every day as opposed to our high school student. But then for opportunity for well-rounded curriculum, it's a little bit different than the middle and elementary schools. And again, this is where it references AP coursework, CTE programs, and dual enrollment. So this is just another way of looking at that 65% and 35%. This is actually straight off of the Maryland report card, which I'm hoping I can take you to in just a second. We'll see if there's internet access here. No, all right. So I can't get to the internet. But this is a screen basically straight from the first section of the report card. I will say this is specifically, this is one of our schools, this is Pemberton Elementary School, that earned 71% of their total possible points earned. So you can see the two columns there, the first two columns, where the numbers are filled in, that's where you want to pay attention to, so the possible points and then their earned points. And so they just basically add them up and then divide. And so Pemberton earned 71% of the possible points. If you remember that, the gap there, four-star schools were from 60 to 75. So that was closer to the five-star range than it was the three. So, but it earned four stars. And when you go to the report card, you can drill down into every single one of our schools. Here are our specific star ratings. If you look at the first five there and you see that there's no star rating, those are our primary schools. And because it's the pre-K to two schools, where we start official state assessments in grade three, so because there's no assessment data for those, there's not enough points that they can possibly earn to get a rating. So that's why you see that our primary schools do not have an assigned star rating. All of our other elementary schools did earn four stars. All fell within that 60 to 75% of points earned. And then if you look on the right-hand side, it is our elementary, our middle and high schools, where our, what I'm gonna call our in-town middle schools and our in-town high schools all earned three stars. And then our more rural, Mardella guys over there, our Mardella and Pittsville's earned four.
Rick, there obviously seems to be this distinction between our elementary, you know, our younger population of students in our, our middle and high schools, they mostly were threes and most of our primaries or, or elementaries are four. But I know you said something about the absenteeism, particularly in the high schools, really, that measurement really hurts. Was that the biggest contributor to sort of, you know, putting us closer in the three category with our older population?
Yeah, so yes, the absenteeism was one of the predominant factors. And it also mirrored other data throughout the state. So looking at other state comparable data, both elementary schools across the state performed a little bit higher than, say, the middle and high schools. So our data does align very closely with that, specifically attendance, as well as the completion for a well-rounded curriculum, making sure, because we had a number of graduates who unfortunately weren't in a CTE program, did not meet one of the academic requirements. So that's definitely an area of growth that our high schools already started to work on.
Yeah, that seems to indicate to me one or two things. Either the measuring system is kind of biased toward the younger populations, or across the state, we do a better job with our younger populations versus our older populations.
I would say it's more, I would say it's more biased, but, and the data supports that statement. It's just not me saying it.
Well, I mean, you measure graduation rate, which obviously you don't measure grade school, you know, so, yeah, I mean, so there, you know, it's obviously, Wycomico's has below state average graduations and that, right? So we're gonna get dinged on that. So, yeah, I mean, if we measure graduation rate for elementary schools, we're doing pretty good, definitely well. So, but, yeah, I mean, I think, like you say, the measurement's a little bit different for high school, so if there's a little bit of a bias.
And I'll show you this, the next slide. Sorry, yep.
And I was gonna ask you what hurt the three city schools?
Absenteeism was definitely higher and the academic, the test score component was not as high as some of the outlined schools. Dr. Hanlon pointed out, and I failed to mention, the evening high school, some of you guys know about our evening high school program and it meets the needs of our community. Students who had to drop out of regular day school for a wide variety of reasons, it's just not working for them, or maybe dropped out and came back to school a couple of years later because they realized that they need to earn that high school diploma. So it definitely meets the needs of our student population. We honestly don't even believe it should be factored in the same way as the rest of the schools. I think it's not fair to evening high school. I think evening high school does a great job for a unique student population in our community. So to say that it's a one-star school, I think doesn't do it justice. It's one of my favorite graduations every year. We'll have one in January. We'll probably graduate anywhere between 10 to 14 students who otherwise would not have earned a high school diploma. So. And I know this is very tough to see, but we do have the data for all the other schools in the state. And just by looking at it, you can see the disparity, the breakdown based upon all of the different levels, elementary, middle, and high, and then the various combined schools across the state as well, by county.
Does everybody use that park testing?
Everybody in the state of Maryland, yes. And so, in the state of Maryland, this is the last year that we'll be using the park assessments. They will be transitioning to MCAP, Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program. The state is actually in the process right now of soliciting bids, for lack of a better term, to bring in a new vendor. So we will be transitioning from park to MCAP. However, it's important to note that the same, the same standards, the same, the assessment will be measuring the same standards that we currently cover. So we're not gonna be adjusting any curriculum or anything like that. It would just be using a different assessment to measure it.
So the complaints that we've heard over the past couple of years will stay?
They'll probably stay in this year. The hope will be the MCAP is, the hope is that MCAP will be
Better.
Better, shorter, less interruptions to the instructional day, because the complaints you heard are coming from within as well, where principals have to totally disrupt their learning environment for a week or two to do these tests that are state mandated. So the state has heard those complaints as well and the hope will be that MCAP is a better, more efficient assessment tool. To be determined.
Other questions?
I would encourage you to go to Maryland Report Card and drill down into some of our data. And if you have any questions through that process, by all means, please reach out and I'll be glad to help you out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
So our second item, I'd like to invite Jeff Hagan and Matt Aki to come up. We are We are going, we would like to share with you a presentation on where we are with Beaver Run Elementary School, the capital project. As you maybe have seen in what's come forth in our CIP for FY20 Beaver Run, we are requesting $9 million in funding, and just want you to be aware of what the needs are there. So Mrs. Ashby was unable to be with us today, but we have her able team here. Mr. Hagan is from Hoard, Copeland, and Mock Architects, and Matt is our facilities planner at the school system. So I will turn it over to the two of you.
Dr. Hanlon?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to introduce members of the
Oh, yes, thank you. I had it on my paper.
Two members here.
Yes, we have Hugh Livingston and Jim Thomas, who both, I believe, are chair and vice-chair of the School Building Commission with us as well.
We also have Ernie Davis, who's a member.
And Ernie Davis.
Bruce is a member, Mr. Fitzgerald is a member, Wayne Strasberg, I think that's everybody. A lot of them here today.
Thank you.
So I'll just do a real quick precursor. Jeff, obviously from HCM, and this is our design development presentation. Jeff's team just wrapped up that portion of the design, and we have submitted that to the state. So this is the presentation for that. We've just started the construction documents, so I'll let him walk through the design.
Great, thank you. Again, I'm Jeff Hagan, thank you for letting me come here and speak with you today. This is a snapshot in time, as Matt said, of where we are in the design. We've just finished that DD phase, so now we're moving into the construction documents, which is getting the job ready to go out for bid. Quick agenda of what we're going to talk about today. I'll hit on some of these very quickly, but if you want more detail, please stop me if I'm going too quickly. Happy to help answer any questions. Just briefly, our design team has been working on this project since the beginning. And our design schedule, it's a little hard to see, but everything above construction document phase is in gray, and that's what we've completed to date, which started with a feasibility study. We wrote an educational specification, we did the schematic design, that's been approved by the state. We just recently completed design development documents, and that's in for state review currently. And along the way, we've done quite a few different types of meetings, community outreach, et cetera, which I'm going to touch on as we go through the presentation. So starting with that, the community outreach piece, it started with a really robust committee that the school principal put together, that we've been meeting with on a regular basis. All design decisions have been going through this committee. They've helped shape the design of this project so that we're designing to the user and exactly what they need for best delivering the educational program to their students. In addition to that committee, we've also had a number of wide-ranging community events, two of which I've highlighted here. On June 6th, we had an event in the gymnasium at the school where we invited the community in to present what we had been working on to date in terms of the design and to solicit feedback from them. And that included a, what we call a brown paper exercise, that you can see in the upper-left corner of the slide, where we, or we laid out images of different types of buildings, and not necessarily things that I've designed, but just good examples of school design from the exterior to classroom design to courtyard design, all the components that would go into this building. And we asked them to write on the paper what they liked and disliked about the images they were seeing, so that we could take that feedback back to the shop and incorporate that into our design decisions as we, as we were going through the process. It's a really great tool to find out what people think, and to do it on their own terms and in their own language and ideas that they can write out without any pressure. So that was one great event. And then another one that's highlighted here as well is we attended the back-to-school afternoon that Mr. Twilly invited us to, and we called that our gallery walk, where we did a two-party event. We did for the adults and the parents that were there, images of, again, of the design as it had developed further from that June 6th event, and asked them to comment, ask questions, update them, and we're able to get, you know, again, some more good feedback from everybody. At the same time, we had an event for the students, to make it fun for them. We brought in furniture, and it was kid-sized furniture, educational furniture, and we asked them to do what we call the Goldilocks project, and to test drive that and see what fit, what didn't fit, what they liked, what they didn't like. And they voted with little pom-poms, and then at the end of the day, we found that the older students liked, gravitated to a certain type of chair, and the younger students gravitated to a different type of chair. So it was, it was good. So as that furniture piece develops further down the road, we kind of know what they're, what they like and don't like. So really, really great events, and we really appreciate that we've been able to speak to the community as, at large. A little bit about the project, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but just, just to recap a little bit, we've got almost 18 acres to work with. This existing school, though, where it's located, is a bit of a challenge. It's right in the middle of our site, and we're going to keep this building open while we're, while we're constructing the new building. We've worked out a scheme that I'll share with you in a second that I think is very effective and will keep the separation. Some of the highlights of what we're going to put on the site, of course, are the typical things you'd expect at a school, bus parking and drop-off, staff and visitor parking. In this case, and as the case of most of your new schools or all of your new schools, those will be separated, so we'll keep the traffic from intermingling. We'll have dedicated place space for the younger kids versus the older kids at the, at the school. We'll have about a 98,000 square foot building when we're, when we're done, for a student capacity of 650 students. And that includes bringing the students that are currently over at WELC to this, to this school when it, when it opens. So that means we'll be serving a student population of the Y3 students, pre-K, kindergarten up through grades two.
Did you say WELC was moving to Beaver Run?
That's correct, yes.
What's going to happen to that facility?
Yet to be determined.
Thank you.
Possibly be space for additional pre-K.
And then we'll, again, well, within the building itself, we'll have the typical, typical spaces, about 30 classrooms with support spaces, student dining, a separate gym, a performance platform, media center. As noted there, it's a Title I school, so we have a number of support spaces to serve those programs. And then the state also contributes additional funds, as I'm sure you're aware, for community spaces. In this case, we're including a community wellness center that is currently being developed as part of the school, attached to the nurses' suite for, for additional community use. So what you're seeing here is a proposed site plan. It's maybe a little hard to see, but the red dashed outline is our existing school, and then the blue shaded piece is our proposed building. So we're building in the back of the site. Our intent is with a parcel of land to the left above that solar field, the solar field is not part of, of the county, the school system, but we're going to use that as our staging area, and then we'll be able to feed the construction from the left and be able to separate all that construction activity from the existing school so that we keep the existing students safe and in full operation while we're building a new project. In orange, you see in the back, left and right, are new playgrounds that will serve the school for the pre-K and K students on the left and the first and second grade students on the right. We have a dedicated grass field up front in that orange box there, right outside of the gym. And then as you can see, we've, we've been able to reutilize the existing curb cuts for the most part, which will save costs. Buses will come in, in that centerpiece, and then to the left of that, we'll, we'll have parent, a parent drop-off loop, and then we'll also have teacher access to the, to their parking lot. And we've created some separation there so the teachers don't get stuck while parents are lined up picking up or dropping off their kids, which is always a concern.
And Mike Mayer.
Exactly. And then lastly, we are creating a, one new curb cut over on the right, which will be for our service access. We wanted to limit that to the far edge of the property so students aren't having to cross that service drive in any, in any manner. And that brings you back to the service area. And then briefly, just to highlight the, the design of the floor plan, we've separated the building into two components. What we've been calling the, the public side of the building, which is at the front, and then the more private side, which is the classrooms at the back. And that's separated by a main corridor running left to right on, on your screen. And what we mean by that is we, we've put the media center, the gymnasium, and the cafeteria kitchen up front, and with direct access to the parking lot, so that can be used after hours by the community as a whole, without having to access the back of the building. So we were able to lock off those, those classroom wings at four points after hours or even during hours in the event of an emergency. So we create good separation there. So that's why we, we call it the public versus the private. Those classroom wings, the one on the left is for the pre-K K students in the Y3, and that's centered around an interior courtyard. And then the wing on the right is our first and second grade wing, also around a courtyard. And then bridging between those two are some flex classrooms, so that if we end up with a larger pre-K K population at some point, they can grab that dark blue classroom or vice versa, and not feel totally separated from the rest of their, their classmates and students, so, or, or teachers. The purple boxes are our Title I programs and special ed. And then off of each of the two courtyards, we have art on, on the, on the one side and music on the other. And the intent of those courtyards is to be low maintenance, but allow educational programs to take place in those courtyards. So we're currently working with the school to design that and figure out exactly how we can utilize that educationally. I should have started with the, the main entrance to the school is, is between the media center in orange and then, and the admin in green, and we have a secure vestibule as you would typically see in a new school. The community wellness center I mentioned is to the left of the green admin, at the top in the kind of yellowish-orange, and then right below that is our nurses' suite. And then lastly, we've created some various access points that you see in green, which are important to the school. They asked for this for arrival and dismissal, so that we don't have a bottleneck at one door. We've got multiple doors that we can get the students in and out. During the day, of course, those doors would be locked and insecure. Next, I highlighted just some building sections through here, mainly to show that we're doing like you've done on other schools. We're putting the, the rooftop equipment actually undercover in a mechanical mezzanine. So we've created some pitched roofs to locate that equipment. That'll make the equipment last much longer, as you can imagine. And we didn't do a full pitched roof because of cost. We're trying to cut costs wherever we can, so we, we did the pitched roof to create the mezzanine, and then we stepped it and have a low-slope roof next to that so that we can save some money. And also, it creates a good opportunity for when this equipment does eventually need to be replaced, hopefully 30, 40 years from now, we can pull it out of that side wall and not be trapped inside an attic space. So we're trying to think ahead to the future for maintenance purposes. And then next, getting to the pretty picture piece, a lot of feedback I mentioned from that brown, those brown paper exercises we did. What we heard was with Winter Place Park being next door to the site is they wanted, the community as a whole wanted to have this, this school feel like it was a part of that and blend with that. So I think we've been able to achieve that. I'm going to zoom in on the next picture and just highlight some of the materials. The materials we're using are exactly the same materials you've used on your last several new buildings. So we're really doing nothing unique here. It's just how the colors that we're choosing and how we're implementing them a little bit will help blend this building and make it feel part of the community. And that, and those materials essentially are typical standing sea metal roofs that you would see for our sloped roofs, storefront window systems, metal, metal wall panels. And then instead of brick, we're using a stone veneer. It's much like a brick product. It comes actually from the brick, same brick companies, it's just a different product that they, that they represent. And that, we think, will tie all of this together and make it feel like it's embedded in the community and always been a part of, a part of the Beaver Run community as a whole. And then next is, of course, the necessary thing that we have to be talking about in today's society is, is safety and security. Every design decision we make and how this building is shaped is, takes, takes a cue from safety and security of the students. It's, it's at the forefront of, of everything we're, we're thinking about. SEPTED is, is crime prevention through environmental design, and that's, that's kind of the latest, I don't want to say buzzword, but the latest thinking that's out there, a lot of people are talking about it. Essentially, there's technology that you can use for security, and then there's how you design the building is a second way that you can really make sure that you're, you're designing a safe and secure facility. We're certainly going to be doing all the technology pieces that, that are typically done and always thinking about better ways to do that. But as I mentioned before, just some highlights of how we've laid out this building. We've separated the students to the back so that there's that buffer of those big public spaces, so that when the students are in their classrooms on a day-to-day basis, they're, they have that buffer up front. We've created a secure vestibule, of course, as, as we always would. We've created good sightlines from admin so that the administrative staff that's there all day long can see who's approaching the building. We've kept that clean and, and unobstructed so that anybody that's approaching that building will be seen quickly and early. And actually, one of the advantages that happened to be the case of having to put this building in the back of the site gives you an extra-long front driveway to this, in front approach to this building so that people, it'll take somebody a while to get to the building so they can be seen very clearly and early. So transparency is a big piece of this, and, and trying to find that right balance of transparency so that people can be seen but yet also feel secure. Again, I just highlighted a few things here. I'm glad to get into this in more detail. There's a lot that we're thinking about here, including being able to lock off those four doors back to the classrooms with, with a piece of technology plus the typical doors. So again, something that we're, we take very seriously and are incorporating in every way possible. And then lastly, we'll just talk a little bit about the sustainability strategies that we have to implement on this project. LEED has been the, the forefront of what the state has mandated for many years, but now they've opened it up to two other ratings options, which is IGCC and Green Globes, in addition to LEED. The latest version of LEED has become even more difficult to achieve in terms of the points that you have to get. So we did an analysis of all three rating systems to see what would be the best path forward for Beaver Run in, in this project. And what we determined was, at the end of the day, IGCC really is the way we, we recommend going. It will give us the most flexibility in terms of the points that we have to achieve. We, we can appeal to the board on, on points if, if something is just unachievable because of the specifics of the project. They are willing to listen and willing to, to work with us on this. So at this point in time, we're, we're moving forward with the IGCC model in terms of our, our sustainability strategy. That's a whole nother presentation in and of itself as to what that's all about, but I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And we have one of the greatest people knowledgeable about this, Lisa Ferretto on our team, she works for, for HCM, who's very knowledgeable about this and guiding us through this process very, very smoothly. With that, I will turn it over to Matt to talk about budget.
Fun stuff. All right. We kind of broken out the costs, as you'll see on the screen. As you know, we submitted the FY20 CIP request for Beaver Run. Just walking down this spreadsheet really quickly is the construction cost is number one, between the demolition hazmat of the existing school and new construction in the site, coming in about $35 million, and that's today's dollars. Construction slated to start in 2020, the spring of 2020, so we've added an escalation factor for all the various reasons. So that brings us up to roughly $37 million for construction cost. Top of construction costs, we obviously have all the fees that come with that. You have design fees, you have CMR fees, and those can be broken down into two different groups. One is state-eligible, which you see is number two, and then number three is the soft cost. Those are costs that the state will not participate in. So to get our two state and local share, you look to the right. If you combine the state, currently our cost-share split is 95%. They reduced it to 95. Last year it was 97, so this project falls under 95%. So the state will participate in $26.316 million, which leaves local with $23,050 million. And I put underneath that kind of what we've received from date from the county, which is $3.05 million, which leaves with the remaining of $19,975,000. I'll share with you that this past week, the state had their 75% recommendations from the IAC, which was approved, and the state is currently for Beaver Run anticipating, at the 75% mark, $6,857,000. One thing the state implemented this year is they're also giving us their 100% prediction or what they foresee us getting at our 100%, and they're, they're predicting that we will get our full $9 million that we have requested this year. So we're very pleased, we're excited that they're doing that, they're kind of showing us what's coming, so we're able to plan. And we are also into the county for the $9 million as well. And as a big project, we're obviously trying to front-load with the dollars so we have enough to get the construction started in March of 2020. So if you guys have any questions about design process, budgets, any one of those things, we'd be glad to hear them.
So you start building in March of 2020, occupancy would be?
Fall of 2022, so the 2022, '23 school year.
Any questions?
Quick question on the environmental side. Are we able to put any permuel papers or anything like that, or I didn't see anything like that listed, or anything we can do to get WIP credits or use this thing?
Yeah, in all honesty, we're still working through some of those details. What we, so I, I don't, I don't have the answer yet just because we, we haven't quite worked out all the site stormwater pieces yet. So that's a possibility, but undetermined.
Great. Thank you for having us. We're very excited.
If anybody is interested in taking a tour of Beaver Run as it is now, to just get a better feel for the needs that we have there.
Has it changed?
No.
I'd be happy to set that up.
Open concept with bags to stop the waterfall. Open concept with bags to stop the waterfall.
Right.
My kids like that at that time.
Very good.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
For our last item, Mr. Ford, you want to join me, please? This next item is just a heads-up of something that's going to be coming your way at your next meeting. So Mr. Ford's going to blame it.
Thank you. Bruce Ford, Chief Finance Operation Officer for the Board of Education. Again, a heads-up for the council members. On the regular meeting of the Board of Education in December, the board approved submitting a request to the county executive for a budget transfer in the amount of $265,000. That transfer request was submitted to the county executive's office. Mr. Culver directed his staff to fort that request on to Mrs. Hurley. I believe she has received that request. That request is as a result of Wycomico County receiving several students with severe needs in our special education population. Those students that we did not budget for require one-on-one nursing services full-time, from the time they get on the bus to the time they're brought home at night. We're anticipating those costs to exceed $265,000 or near that amount of money. And we'll be back whenever Mrs. Hurley tells me to show up. We're going to be here to entertain any questions that the council may have concerning that request. So we wanted to give you a heads-up.
Now, you said that the county received them. Can they explain that?
Well, they they enrolled in our county. They were not enrolled.
Oh, transferred students? I don't know if they were newborns or no.
No.
We do receive students that way.
Yeah, absolutely. Nope. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I believe that you had several items on your list that you wanted to to discuss, and I'm going to sort of take your lead on these to see what specific questions you had. You had CTE program on the list.
I think we're just trying to see where we were with with the CTE program since the last time, I guess, we discussed it. We didn't discuss it the last quarter, but the quarter before that, we could discuss it. Even, I think, in the interim, Somerset County, of course, you know, broke out.
Building a new school.
They're a new school, so I was just I was just curious. And I think a lot of people in the community are curious and anxious to see what where we are with Wycomico County and where we're planning to go. I think it's a real it's a good niche for this county, as we've discussed in the past.
We are and Dr. Briggs, if you want to join us back up here, you're welcome to chime in. I'll start and please join in as appropriate. We are at or near capacity at Parkside High School. So the challenge is adding CTE programs, traditional CTE programs in that space as opposed to perhaps, which we've done, adding CTE programs that don't require some sort of lab space. For example, this year, we've added an interactive media class at Wycomico High School that is a CTE program, and it is fully enrolled. Very exciting program, so.
Similar to that, like our business and accounting is a CTE program, but it's housed at each of the home schools. So a Mardella student who is a business accounting completer, that's a CTE that counts as a CTE completer, but they never they do not have to come to Parkside. So based upon the space availability, like Dr. Hanlon mentioned, a lot of the growth is going to have to be specifically back at the home schools, which is an area that we're looking at. Mr. Ashby does an outstanding job running our CTE program and just trying to find student interest to tap into, to help out with those graduation rates and to help our young people be more productive members of our county.
So and and we recently had a conversation with Mr. Ashby about another new program that's still very early in discussion, so I'd rather not share with you specifically what it is yet, but another CTE program where we may be able to find some kind of innovative space for an additional program. We agree with you. We agree that adding CTE programs, obviously, the state encourages advocates for CTE programs. They're looking at increasing the number of students who graduate with CTE in a CTE program over the over the course of the next few years, and and it's part of what's considered credit for a well-rounded curriculum. So we're in total agreement, and we're constantly exploring, and space is an issue.
How many different subjects are there that entail? Is it like ten different CTE courses?
It's more than that. It's more than that, I would say.
Closer to twenty.
Probably closer, yeah.
And how do you evaluate which ones you're going to teach? Is it based on student request from the students?
Interest.
I'm assuming you also may coordinate. Is it worthwhile to coordinate? I guess you do with Warwick to see what they're looking for, but they could be looking for a need, but if the students don't have the interest, it doesn't serve any purpose.
And Warwick uses our space at night as well, so they come into our space and to teach their students as well. So, yeah, I mean, there's constantly articulation back and forth between us and Warwick, so.
Now, what you know, what was what Somerset did, was that very similar to what we had already accomplished through our program at Parkside, or have they gone to another level?
I don't know the details of their program. I think it's basically what we did.
I believe they're building a new school. I don't know what programs they're adding.
It's just CTE, you know, building. I mean, it's really nice. I've been by it, and it's going to be nice, and they're well-deserving of it down there. But it is, they're growing their CTE program.
Yeah, I didn't know if they already had a CTE program, and they decided to expand on it. So they already did.
Yes.
Is that where the new building is? At the current location or past location?
No, it's near their it's near their new board. It's near their Board of Education.
Yes, that's right up front. When you turn in, it's right there, the new building.
Now, is a new building in our radar, I said on our radar screen for a new CTE building since you said we're at capacity? I know you're that. That's always a mission, but it's got to be on the radar screen.
That is not on our in the near future, but we're looking at ways to address the capacity of our high schools.
You know, our CTE program, and I've said it all the years I've been on the board, is the best kept secret in Wycomico County.
I agree with you.
If anybody's had the opportunity to walk through it, it is the best kept secret. And I'm more proud of it.
And it's high-tech. It's not something that's all hands-on, like the model mechanics or.
It's a combination.
Nail together.
Right.
It's a lot of high-tech.
Public-private partnerships.
Just always trying to keep that on the on the front burner to see, you know, how cognizant we are of the businesses that might be out there that could create an opportunity for any type of additional funding. I've just liked to keep that on the agenda so that we're aware of it and can.
We are currently exploring, very specifically exploring, an opportunity for alternative financing through a public-private partnership for a construction project that may help alleviate some of our enrollment issues at the high school. So much more to come on that, but pretty exciting. So, yes, for definitely, that's on our radar.
Are there advertising restrictions in schools so that you to make sure that you're not sort of adopting the children?
We have a policy on advertising in our schools. In fact, is that that's one of the policies that we are currently reviewing and is coming to the board for revision in next month, January. January.
I jokingly said one time in a meeting that I didn't care if they had billboards in the hallways if that was a means by which to get more, you know, more funding to the schools. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Right. We're exploring that. We're exploring additional naming opportunities that we haven't really explored before, so we're building components, not just schools, so.
Comments?
Kerwin Commission.
Kerwin Commission, yes.
I was going to ask that. I said, well, maybe this hour, let it pass.
And that may be some premature because they've still got a ways to go.
Yeah, they're in they're meeting all day today and all day tomorrow.
So more to come, right?
Much more to come before they present their recommendations to the legislature, and then it's to be determined what the legislature will do with the billions of dollars that they are talking about.
But I think the one reality is all of us need to recognize that education, as we know, it's going to be much different going forward.
It could be, depend on depending on what gets funded and what policies get approved. But it is, if you have had an opportunity to read through the work of the five work groups, it's I mean, it's it's very lofty. It's, I'll use the word again, exciting, but everybody's asking the question, how in the world is this going to be funded? Because it is billions of dollars.
My concern is the small counties could be left out. I'm worried about the big counties taking most of the money. That's my concern from the whole mess.
Yeah, we're always fighting that battle. And I know that they're they're I thought I thought that at one time, they abandoned the geographical index.
They're talking about that.
But I think they're definitely concerned considering bringing that back in full force so that the the more expensive areas will get more funding simply because it costs more to buy supposedly buy materials there. I don't know. I'm sure that's what they're going to come up with either way. And we had we had touched on, you and I touched on briefly, as far as English-language learners. And I've talked to members in great detail, in the Haitian community in particular, who are very concerned about anxiously getting their children up to the learning level. And it didn't really strike home to me until it was pointed out that if you have someone that has trouble with English language learning, they're not going to learn chemistry, they're not going to learn physics, they're not even going to start with history until they get past that obstacle of English. And in Wycomico County, I think we all recognize the fact that it's a largely a very largely growing community.
Absolutely.
By leaps and bounds, and.
I think it's like 1,154 students.
Right. And as far as foreign-born individuals in Wycomico County, it's the largest number over over Spanish. So I think there are more Spanish individuals here, but as far as those born in a foreign country, the Haitians, I think, are the largest community. And I think we're seeing that large influx. So I think maybe the next quarter, we can put that on the agenda to make sure we kind of figure out how we might want to address that as well. And, of course, it would bring up all the numbers if we can work on those numbers as well. And I think even talking about Kerwin, one of their building blocks, I think, specifically addresses English-language learners as part of what.
Students at risk.
Students, students at risk and English-language learners.
Right, would be would fall within that category.
Yes, yes. So we can we can revisit that in the next quarter.
Definitely.
Be good. Any other comments or? I think you all did a good job.
I appreciate you having us, and congratulations to all of you.
Yes, congratulations.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
You got a brother, man?
You, Dr. Briggs. Always good to see you, buddy. Ciao, dude. See you, Don.
Thank you.
Don, great. Congratulations.
Sorry, Mark.
Weston, are we ready?
I'm ready if you're ready.
I obtain a motion to reconvene in legislative session for Wycomico County Council December 18th.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? We're now reconvene as the Wycomico County Council. Work session item to be continued from a prior meeting is a prior meeting from today is the.
Resolution 146.
Thank you. Resolution 146. Now, I guess Councilman Holloway, I'll have to ask you to for a motion to bring Resolution 146, 2018 back to the table.
I'm not going to do that.
For discussion.
Not until we have the article, the signed papers from the MDE. We tabled it, we voted on it, and that's what we voted on.
Right, but we did table it, we did vote on it, table it, and when you table it, you table it for another time so that it can be brought back at another time. So that's what we're trying to do.
At another time, when I said when we tabled it until we got the paperwork.
Well, let me regroup on that one because any council member may make a motion to reintroduce the resolution back onto the table.
If they want to, they can. If they want to, they can.
So if we have a motion to second to bring Resolution 146, 2018 back to the table, we may or may not.
Well, can do we have the signed thing?
We don't have it in our hands at the moment.
All right, so there is no we are not it has not been brought back to table Resolution number 146, 2018 has still been considered tabled, and.
Well, I'll make a motion to bring it back just so we can discuss it.
All right, there's a motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Motion second. Thank you. Weston.
The person who signs the application is actually out of the office today, so we should get it. Yeah, we should get it tomorrow or Thursday, fully executed, depending on their schedule. I believe the discussion was, can we have a resolution that states acceptance contingent on having that permit in hand?
That's a good point. Mr. Taylor, you mentioned to me that Section 3, I believe, on this resolution allows for that?
Well, yeah, that that was put in to address this situation. Now, if you all don't want to do it that way, you don't certainly don't have to, but.
Well, it got passed me. I didn't see it, I'll tell you that, and I think maybe other council members didn't quite note it.
But the original request was, when we were talking about this before, and however the the resolution's worded, probably not worded correctly, is what we wanted, was that we would have those permits or the paperwork to exempt us from permitting before we pass this resolution. That's what we discussed as a council numerous times, correct? Right? Sure.
I think I'll say I'm trying to find the original.
You know, we asked for two things, the insurance, which you've taken care of and appreciate that, and the other, and we asked for that weeks ago, and it's still not here, and this is, this is, you know.
I'll be glad to.
It's just another point of part of being the insurance of taking this property for what we need it for. And I'm not bussing at you.
No, I understand.
I know you tried.
I mean, we included the drawings in the brief book. You'll see with a number of pages, that's not done overnight. You know, we submitted a packet that, other than asking for more information on the right-of-way, they had no comments. Soil Conservation District had no comments. Again, the exemption is just it's a formality.
So when this person is supposed to sign it, sits down and looks at it, what if he has a problem with it or her, whoever it would be, I shouldn't say he.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, what if they have another question? So.
That's always possible, too.
That's always possible. You know, we've made a concession today to come back at a special meeting after we get these papers, and I think that was very fair.
What what Weston's trying to say is he's dealing with government, Joe.
Well, so are we.
Where is the clause, Mr. Taylor, that's being referenced?
It's it's on the one that's in the briefing book. I believe it starts on the bottom of the first page or the top of the second, and it's numeral three.
See, this is what's confusing me is that I was emailed one, and obviously, I don't have a number three in this one I was emailed.
Yeah, I think you might have to look at this on the table.
Is it just the handout, though?
It is in the handout, yes. It's the one in the handout.
It was highlighted. That's the yellow highlighting.
Oh, there it is. The county will receive an exemption from.
It's this page. It's the email from Moore.
So it's not part of the resolution. It's not.
It is part of the resolution. There was one word change that Mr. Taylor has suggested.
Yeah, it is part of the resolution. I think that there needs to be just a housekeeping-type text amendment.
It says it says the county. It says, it says the county has received, county has received an exemption from the Department of Environment.
County has, county has received.
But it originally said will receive.
Yeah, originally said will receive, and I think that should be changed, particularly because of the nature of the discussion you're having now.
So what you're saying is that we could pass this Resolution 146, 2018, and I absolutely cannot sign it unless it has been received?
Well, you can sign it, but they can't go to closing. They can't consummate the deal unless they get the mining permit.
Okay, well, I would not sign this unless we received. I wouldn't sign it unless we received. I'm trying to keep from coming back.
It don't matter, John. It's not what we asked for, it's not what we voted on. I'm not trying to be difficult either. It's not what we asked for, and it's not what we voted on, and it's not what the resolution says.
I think we're heading towards coming back another day to meet, and I'm just trying to avoid that.
I think we agreed to that.
We agreed to that earlier.
All right, well...
Well, it's back open now, so we got to decide now whether we...
Yeah, table it again. We don't know what's in Annap, is it Annapolis where these folks are at?
I mean, the thing to keep harping on is that this is an exemption, this is a formality. They, the people who reviewed this approved what we put forward, so...
If it was such a formality, Weston, it would probably have been done by then.
It has bureaucracy, and it has signatures needed, and, you know, that person's not available, so...
I think our votes mean something, or I hope they do, to make a vote.
Well, yeah, there's no doubt, and we tabled it for that reason. But when we tabled it, it's something I was unaware, which I think is probably an important part of this, and I was confused with a lot of the different paperwork here. But if I were to specifically tell this council, because I work at the direction of the council, that I will not sign this, this resolution will go nowhere once it leaves this table. It will go nowhere without the approval of the council, recognizing that this mining permit is valid and in our hands.
The direction of the council this morning was, was to table it until we got... I don't want to be...
But it's back open now. I would agree with what you just said, John. I mean, I would support that, so we can, we could approve this, but...
Simply measure, it's not to, it's just simply so that we can avoid having to come back and meet together as a council.
I feel better having that layer there with you. I'm okay with it, having that extra layer to say if you're not going to sign, that's fine with me. I'd say I'm okay to proceed personally.
If you don't say yes, I don't, if you don't say yes to this, I don't sign it.
I'm not going to say yes.
I don't mean today, but I mean, if you were to say, if you were to tell us, tell me not to sign this, I wouldn't sign it. If you were not happy with what was brought to the table to you today at 7:00, tomorrow at 5:00.
I think we can find enough council people that'll come back. We're not trying to kill this project, we're just trying to make sure things are right. And that's what we've been trying to do ever since we started this project.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, you got a motion and a second on the...
We got a motion and a second. I'm now just trying to get through the discussion before it gets tabled again. Because it can get tabled again.
Well, the vote's not to table, the vote now would be...
Untable it. No, it's back on, it's back on the table, but it can be tabled.
No, I think we're discussing untabling it.
Right.
Yeah, so it's...
I don't know.
We've already, we've already untabled it.
We've already untabled it. It's on the desk right now as a resolution.
Right.
And that's what the discussion...
We didn't vote to untable it.
Not yet.
Can I just throw in one observation? Depending on which way you go as to whether you want to proceed forward today fully or come back, in addition to this issue on the mining permit, we still have the issue on the dollars and the amount of taxes, the prorated taxes for this current tax year. So there is another issue also.
Well, while we had it, all right, Mark says that I did not get a full vote, I may not have gotten a full vote on bringing back from the table.
Yeah, I thought this was a discussion of whether or not it should be brought back to the table.
No, I was going to head along in the discussion, so. We have to have a motion to bring it back from the table. So all those in favor?
Aye.
I couldn't hear that, sorry.
A motion to bring it back off the table.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. All right, so this is off the table and discussion never happened? All right.
That was a waste of 15 minutes of my life.
And we'll wait, now, Weston, to give you a shot.
Yeah, should be, should be tomorrow.
All right, now, when the council reconvenes, keep in mind, we have two things to discuss. One will be the mining permit, the second one will be whether or not anyone chooses to amend the resolution by the $9,000, how much, 700, 500?
9,500.
Yeah, 9,500 and some change.
Those two I...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session.
So moved.
A second.
All right, we're going straight to legislative session. Is that what you read before?